We're gonna go ahead and call public hearing for June 14 to order. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. There is no public hearing, so we're gonna move right into our regularly scheduled meeting. Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Mr. Seau Hall, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we come, we come with no healing and no doing power of our own, Father, but we come in the mighty name of Jesus, and it is his name that I pray right now, Lord. We ask that you come into this meeting, Lord, and everything that we do be decent and in order. Now, Lord, we pray for the families over in Orlando, Father. We ask that you bless them, and that you touch them, and that you keep them. We know that you wouldn't put no more than they could bear. Now, Lord, we pray for our city, the city of Hammond, Lord. We ask that you bless them. We pray for our state and our country. Lord, we pray and ask that this council, that they just put everything in it that they have, Lord, and that we can come to some results, Father. We pray for our police department. We pray for every citizen in the city of Hammond, Lord. We ask that you bless us and that you keep us. We pray all this in the name of Jesus. This is my prayer. Amen.
I would like to invite all veterans and active military to ring a proper salute. Councilman, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Let's allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports, do we have any council reports?
Last night, I'm pretty sure everybody know, there was a shooting in my district last night, right at that park, which I had been asking for patrolling. There was a shooting there without any casualties, a week or so before, and I had talked to the police department during the budget meeting, and I talked to you, Mayor, and we need some, I even talked to the recreation director to find out about the times that the park is closed, and who's in charge of it, when it's closed, and what can we do about making sure that there's no one in there with no nefarious activities. And last night, we lost that battle. There was a murder in that park last night, or it started at that park. And we still need some patrolling of that park. We also need some lighting, so that we can, people can be seen. We have private citizens who are putting up cameras. And if we had better lighting, we can catch them on the spot. I mean, you know, even if they get away, we'll know exactly where they is doing what. And we just, we pray for the families that have been affected. And we're still asking for more patrolling of District 3, and especially Rooney Park.
Any other council reports? Mayor?
Well, as we know, Tremaine Sanford was arrested in New Orleans with the help of New Orleans Police Department, Attorney General's Office, Homeland Security, and other agencies that have been working with us to help us curb crime in our community. These are the types of things where the community needs to get involved with the city. It's 10:30 at night. I was called at 10:40, and by the time we arrived on scene, William Davis, 34-years-old, had died on the porch of his uncle's house. This is a continuing problem across the state, across the city of Hammond, that we need to deal with. Without the help from these agencies, we probably wouldn't have apprehended the subject. He should be on his way back to Hammond to face the crimes that he committed, and won't be on the streets, I would imagine, for many years to come. But these are things that we're dealing with in the city of Hammond. Drugs are becoming more apparent. Heroin is becoming accessible to many people now in the city as well as the state, and from all the agencies, the federal agencies, the state agencies we've been talking to. It's something that we need to deal with, and we need to address it heavily. So this is a sad day in the city of Hammond for the Davis family, and there are things that need to be done, and I believe that our police department is working hard. We were there all night dealing with this, and who knows when these things are gonna happen, but the neighbors, I was standing around, they had a lot of people out, and they know who's doing these things in the neighborhoods for the most part. We just need to be able to keep the neighbors safe, because they get threatened, and they're scared to call and get anything done about this. So these are things we've been working on in the past. We've had over 600 arrests since last year through our three departments, street crimes, narcotics, and detectives. We're aggressively doing things out there, the numbers are up showing it, but we have problems with gangs that are infiltrating the area as well, along with the entire North Shore and the state, and it's something that we're dealing with, with the state federal agencies as well. There's ongoing investigations right now as we speak that we can't talk about. So, once again, it's not that our police department isn't doing everything they can do to keep the citizens of Hammond safe. On another note, we're gonna be having public hearings on our final budget adoption on June 28, and the announcement of the millage public hearing is also set for June 28, 2016, in ordinance to adopt the following adjusted millage rates, ordinance to adopt the roll forward millage rates, and an ordinance to adopt the two-millage public works millage rates. And also, July 4 fireworks, the parson open at 5, and the fireworks will start at 9 o'clock. It'll be on Monday this year, it'll be on 4th of July, so please come on out and enjoy the fireworks.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? All right, approval of minutes from May 24. If everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Resolutions, new business number one, a resolution for the council to approve frozen dinners and food products for the Hammond City Jail from July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017. Properly bid with Pond Foods being awarded for $41,773.75. Lacy?
We took bids on this. The low bid was Pond Foods, and the award price is there, $41,773,075. $41,773,000.
And Lacy, just for, just general information, this is for jail?
This is food for the jail.
Any questions for Lacy?
And it's not fancy, I promise.
Any public comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number two, a resolution for the council to approve the mayor to enter into a contract with the Daily Star's official journal for the city of Hammond, Louisiana, from July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017. Lacy?
This is what we do each year. The Daily Star is recommended by state law, meets all the guidelines for serving as our official journal. As such, they publish the minutes of our meetings, our agenda notices, and all of our legal notices for the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Lacy. Item number three, a resolution authorizing Government Consultants, Inc. to act as a financial advisor to the city of Hammond. Councilman Hood?
Mr. President, council, if you remember during the budget session, I talked about, I brought up the issue of a possible bond issue. A lot of the information that I gathered on that, I got from Jim Ryan with Government Consultants, Incorporated. That actually does work for the parish and has done work for the recreation department. And I consulted with him to get information on the best price that we could get if we were to do a bond issuance. Doesn't mean that this is going forth with a bond, by no stretch, but through the course of it, his job is to get us the best price that he can. So this is a, for the public's benefit, this is not a paid retainer. Jim only works if he gets paid. He only gets paid if he works. So with that being said, and a lot of municipalities are going to a municipal advisor, and I'm recommending that we enter in and approve a resolution to authorize Jim to act as our municipal advisor. And I know Jim and his partner here can answer a lot more questions than I can if the council has any questions, or if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try to answer them the best I can.
Are there any questions from the council? Any public questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number four, a resolution approving the submission of $225,500 for year ending, 2015-16, Community Water Enrichment Fund grant application to reconstruct the valve pit at the Blackburn Water Tower. Charles Rogers?
Each year, the city receives an allocation of community water enrichment fund dollars with which we can use to do repairs to water infrastructure. In speaking with our water and sewer department, they've identified the valve pit at the Blackburn Water Tower and well as an ideal use for these funds.
Any questions or comments for Charles? Any public comments, questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number five. A resolution approving submission of an application for $22,571 in federal justice assistance grant funds to purchase law enforcement equipment and supplies for the Hammond Police Department. Charles?
We are also fortunate enough to receive an allocation in federal justice assistance grant funds, or JAG funds, each year. These are specifically for law enforcement purposes. Again, speaking with the Hammond Police Department, these are the areas that they would like to use those funds.
Any questions?
What you saying that they using the funds for?
Law enforcement equipment and supplies. This would include K-9 equipment, duty weapons for new officers in particular, we do issue duty weapons to our new officers, and first aid kits for patrol units.
It's hyperlinked?
Yes, it's hyperlinked, I'm sorry. I think the last paragraph gives you some examples of equipment.
Yeah, it does.
What supplies at the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Item number six, a resolution for the approval of change order number two, final on Zemary Park Improvement Phase 2, Project 420-31502, an amount of $3,000 credit. There are two hyperlink attachments. Webb Anderson?
You should have it. It's, this is just final adjustment of quantities. Y'all already accepted the job. Everything is complete.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number seven, a resolution to reappoint Jimmy Meyer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term from June 15, 2016, to June 14, 2021. Mayor Penepenter?
It's a housekeeping measure where all the terms are rotating, where no one rotates off in the same year, and Jimmy Meyer's been with us for a while, does a great job, so he'll be on for five years.
Any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight, a resolution to appoint Matt Sanford to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term from June 15, 2016, to June 14, 2020.
Actually, Stanley Young was up for the four years, but he's retiring in two years with the parish, so he requested the two-year term. So Matt Sanford is new to the planning board, and we look forward to having him on board, so thank you, Matt, for being willing to serve. Request approved, Matt.
So it is a four-year term now?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine, a resolution to reappoint William Travis to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term from June 15, 2016, to June 14, 2019.
Bill has agreed to be on the board for additional three years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 11, a resolution to appoint Jeffrey Smith for Planning and Zoning. Number 10, a resolution to, you guys are, a resolution to reappoint Stanley Young to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term from June 15, 2016, to June 14, 2018.
Now, I just spoke about Stanley.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, now, item number 11, a resolution to appoint Jeffrey Smith to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a one-year term from June 15, 2016, to June 14, 2017.
Jeffrey has agreed to be on the board with the architect, this is Johnny's district, for a one-year.
Oh, move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 12, a resolution to authorize the Greater Hammond Chamber of Commerce to serve alcohol from 6:00 PM until 9:00 PM on Friday, August 12, 2016, at the Chilling with the Chamber fundraising event, held at the Hammond Chamber Commerce office, 400 Northwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond. Melissa Borlon?
Absolutely. We're requesting, as he stated, a resolution to authorize the Greater Hammond Chamber of Commerce to serve alcohol from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on Friday, August 12, at the Chilling with the Chamber event, held at the Hammond Chamber of Commerce, 400 Northwest Road Avenue in Hammond.
Melissa, I already know the answer, but I ask, y'all are gonna make sure that there are measures in place that underage?
Absolutely.
Okay. Second. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number 13, a resolution for the approval of budget change form number 1609, transferring $110,000 from Project 616-11003 to Project 616-11504. There are two attachments. Chuck Swangler?
Yes, I think the attachments reference $162,000, and some change for that actual transfer rather than $110,000. $162,281. Do we need to amend the?
What's the number again?
$162,000, $162,281.
If Webb was doing this, it'd be more accurate, I'd imagine.
Do we need to amend that?
Yeah.
Have a motion to amend the agenda for the?
If Kathy was representing that district, that question would come up.
She's got 17 seconds left, I can't remember that.
Okay, well, y'all are done.
I entertain a motion to amend for the correct total.
For the correct total.
Which is?
$281.
You all have a second.
I'm gonna let Ms. Beard have that motion. She knows the number.
Motion by Ms. Beard, second by Mr. Hood. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, now we need a motion on the original corrected amount.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 14, a resolution to award the contract for quotes received June 14, 2016, for aerator, aeration supplement, South Waste Water Treatment Plant, Project 616-11504.
You should have those three quotes also, hyperlink. We've been running into some problems with aeration at the South Plant, starting with the aerating, aerators that we had originally. That particular company is no longer in business, so we've been trying to install new aeration, and it hasn't been very successful. So we're supplementing our air with additional oxygen, which is, according to Doctor Tune, our lab chemist, will alleviate our problems. We did solicit on a fairly short timeframe, one week, the quotes, and we have three, and the low quote was from Coastal Process, an amount of $163,094. The transfer doesn't quite match it, but there's already a little bit of money in that, in that fund, so that's why the transfer didn't exactly match. So I would recommend awarding to the low bidder, Coastal Process, for his base bid, $163,094.
Any questions for Chuck?
Motion to approve. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, this won't keep the smell down, right?
This is, unfortunately, this is unrelated to the odor. This is strictly a treatment process. The odor is still being piloted. We have a couple pilot programs in place that are doing some good things with the odor. I don't know if you've noticed, but it hasn't been quite as bad in the last month. Hopefully, it'll get better and better, and that's the idea. It's just no one really has a handle on it. But I think you approved a budget in January to go back and do a pilot program, and that pilot program is underway, and the results so far are very good. They're not slam dunk results, but they're good results. We hope they continue over the summer.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Is a motion, we have a second.
We need a second.
Please, second. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Chuck. Number 15, a resolution to approve the transfer of $88,280 from Sewer Plant Operations Utilities to Sewer Utility Maintenance Lines and Pumps to complete an emergency replacement of Sewer Lift Station number 26, Oak Creek Subdivision. Got?
This is a resolution to transfer $88,280 from Sewer Plant Utilities to the Maintenance Lines and Pumps in Sewer for emergency repair on Sewer Lift Station, Oak Creek Subdivision.
Seems you done quick, huh? What happened?
Both pumps, base rod out of pumps, and the pipe, subzero pipe and bottom ran it out. We operate on a little two-inch bypass pump right now.
Motion to approve. Prove it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
16, a resolution to approve the bid for an emergency replacement of Sewer Lift Station number 26, Oak Creek Subdivision. A low bid is from Lawson-Bonay Construction for $88,280. Motion to approve. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Got, how long is that gonna take?
The pumps are actually on about five minutes out of the way down. From time to delivery, probably a week, four or five days, I guess. Or you said to take the whole top off, the whole new in?
Prove it. 17, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Harper Metal for the addition to a park recreation building at 190 facility for $195,000.
Mr. Peters? Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Peters.
Nice to be here.
Last meeting, Mr. Peters?
Uh, one more.
One more?
Possibly. Possibly one more.
You know, he was trying to get out of it, you saw that.
I think they call that short plank syndrome.
STD.
We brought this for the mayor to end the contract with. Harper Metal makes that addition to the 190 facility out there, the recreation build, recreation, he called it park recreation building, at a 195, and they were the only ones who made, bid on that project. I'm done.
We all done.
Any questions for Mr. Peters?
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 18, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Rail Technical Services LLC for $175,999 for the following work. Preparation to install 50-foot rubber crossing, preparation to install two high railroad crossings,[1520.52] crossings, and three, R.C., surface lining, ballast regulating, and bolt tightening.
This is, again, now, this is another resolution where we have to do some railroad work in the city of Hammond. Of course, the three location Marsh Road was scaling within the city limits here. Uh, and so therefore, the only bidder we had for that particular project was the rail technical service. Uh, so therefore, we asking to go into a contract, mayor to go into contract with them for those services.
And just, just for the record, Mr. President, what, what the funds are coming from?
They're in the budget. Uh, Robert had all this in his budget, most of it, and he had to make the transfer, yeah. He had to make some transfers and some funds.
This is a maintenance project that we have to do on the spur that we own from the main tracks.
I mean, that funding was already, it's already been...
Yes, he had budgeted that accordingly, knowing that this rail upgrade was needed.
I'm assuming it was the same for the last one, too.
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure. Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. If this is your last meeting, thank you for your service.
Thank you, and I, I probably think I have something for next, next, uh, two weeks.
Probably so. Uh, there are no final adoption of ordinances, number, uh, introduction orders, set public hearing. I, I just want to remind everyone, this, this is just a set public hearing. I know there's some people here for some of these projects. Uh, I would really prefer any public hearing or public speaking on those projects to happen during the public hearing, which we scheduled, uh, two weeks from now. So that being said, uh, we'll move on. Number one, an introduction to the orders to approve rezoning request by Charles Street, LLC, to rezone five oh seven to five oh nine West Charles Street from RS eleven to RS three, higher Kate overlay, recommended approval two to one, with the understanding, any subdivision requests will be brought to the planning commission for approval. Josh?
Um, three lots over on Charles. They're currently RS eleven. They're fifty-foot lots, legal fifty-foot lots. They want to use, you know, some of the setbacks of RS three, so they have to go to RS three for the ten-foot setbacks on the front rather than getting variances. Um, so that's what they're doing. They've agreed to the understanding that if they ever wanted to go to, you know, shift lot lines around, they would go for a, uh, planning commission hearing, because it is small enough to do administratively, but they've agreed to give a public hearing if they ever did something about it all. And I will just add that the next item is the same exact. Uh, it's, it's the third of the three lots.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, Josh, would you touch base with them, since this is my, in my district, in case y'all get any calls or get any questions about it? Uh, maybe you could explain to them why your rec, why it was recommended rezoning versus a variance?
Okay. Yeah, no, no problem with that. Um, that area has a tremendous amount of tearing down and building houses, and the houses are getting bigger, and the lots are really not growing. So we're getting a tremendous amount of requests for variances in that area. Um, once you issue a variance without a true hardship, it's really hard to get the lid back on a variance. So issuing a variance just for aesthetics, without it truly being hardship, um, opens it up to everybody getting a variance. And so we're really working diligently now to get away from those variances. And so, um, rezoning is a much, you know, much easier process to vet, and a much easier process, process to say no to. Um, it's not just completely precedent setting. So you can take a lot of different variables into account with rezonings as opposed to variances, once you start issuing them.
So the difference, again, between R eleven and R three?
Um, RS eleven is seventy-five foot lots and fifteen foot setbacks or twenty foot setbacks on the front. Um, R three is forty foot lots and ten foot setbacks on the front. So, um, it allows for a smaller lot, but to be honest, this is a hundred and fifty foot strip, so you couldn't feasibly squeeze a third lot out of it by going to forty foot. You would just make one lot kind of lopsided and bigger into much smaller lots. So really not a whole lot of benefit to the forty foot, but there was benefit for the setbacks to do the parking in the rear and have the house up closer to the street.
But as you said, Councilman Marshall, too, just to reiterate, I want to make this clear, because it's a big deal for the higher Kate. There, there are already three fifty-foot existing lots.
Correct.
There. So it's not going, scaling down to a smaller lot.
No, you're correct.
Because the lot's already there.
Correct.
It's already established.
That is correct.
Just in case, if there's any questions come up, I want y'all to be able to answer them the best you can.
All right, do I have a, a motion to introduce?
Motion to introduce. Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for June twenty-eighth.
Item number two, introduction orders to approve rezoning request by Andrew Jeanette Gassoade, rezone five eleven West Charles Street from RS eleven to RS three, higher Kate overlay recommended with approval two to one, with the understanding that any subdivision request will be brought to the planning commission for approval.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for June twenty-eighth.
Item number three, introduction orders to revise ordinance twenty-five, twenty-six, a restricted conditional use request by Mischebell Incorporated for sections one, two, and three to read, RM two, and section six to read, in accordance with site plan by Environmental Design Systems dated revised four twenty-six, two thousand sixteen, to allow addition to an existing building located at eleven oh six South Holly Street, Zoned RM two, conditional use in Iowa, addition overlay recommended approval by Planning and Zoning Commission.
They have a conditional use to operate there as Mischebell, because it's, it's a residential zoning, commercial use. So part of their condition is that they come to, um, planning commission and council for any revisions to their site, meaning if they add on to a building, as they're wanting to do, they come for a public hearing. So, um, they're adding on, um, that's about it. We changed, you will notice that to read RM two, um, the old conditional use cited R, R five, which we no longer use. So we're just switching around to the zoning that R five switched to RM two. So we just changed the designations to clear it up for the future.
Motion to introduce.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Yeah.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for June twenty-eighth.
Motion to introduce her.
Is it the twenty-eighth?